Hi, Teresa. How you doing?
I'm good.
Yeah, I have my difficulties.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, do you need to come over and say that you're a little bit...
Well, who's the chair? Is he president?
No, 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 no. Not the chair, because we do... We're making...
Mary, go ahead.
Hello? Members of the House, good evening, welcome. Today's meeting Tuesday, March 22nd at 8:00 PM. And this is the scheduled meeting in Rockport. The meeting is held in person to the trainee in Rockport. Members of the public, the meeting remotely gives you... Public participation is valued. Citizens wish to express their views on any topic or agenda in the electronic assistance and participation form in order to register by going to the city website or to any person registered before the meeting begins. Use the same system by writing comments with the city secretary by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The comments will be read to summarize the events of the meeting. I'd like to take a look at all four tenths. Word one.
Here.
Here.
Word three.
Here.
Word four.
Here.
Mayor here. I note the presence of the forum will be followed by the order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance
To you, my
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask Mr. Mr. Kim Hedley to please.
We just thank you for the opportunity, the freedom to come tonight, Father, and discuss and deliberate important issues. We would just ask your presence, your Father, and your grace and your wisdom on council and mayor as they make decisions tonight. In Jesus' name.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We've heard our talk. Is it better?
It's reverberating.
Did y'all hear an echo?
Yeah.
Somebody zoom on that. And y'all zoom on that.
That's Mr. Mr.? Yeah, I can't hear. Okay. Come back away from the microphone. Does that help at all?
It's not you.
It's not you.
Believe our record by test. We'll get it. See if we can't get it. We'll go.
Can you test it, Mayor? Test.
Testing, testing. Mike, check one. Mike, listen.
One speaker. Maybe we're announcing a race today or something.
Yeah, there you go.
We're announcing a race. That's what it is.
Remember Breezy? Who remembers Breezy? There goes Breezy. Coach, are you on track?
How about now? Okay. Thank you. I do have a fresh presentation coming up.
What a football... Whoopie State.
And I believe we got some... Come forward, George Lynn. Melanie. Yep, okay. Welcome. The City Fund for the Rentering and Shopping category is while registered beginning in 2015 with Whoopie Cranes. We donate $5 for each registration group to assist with the crate handling. And this is the 33rd day of the Whoopie Cranes Club in March. Be ready for $1,300. And I got the check for family.
Just where you're at there.
This is really a great job y'all do. I really appreciate it. They should be commended for everything they do with the Whoopie Cranes. Great to see y'all. By the... Hey, Whitehouse, you want to join us? I was just waiting.
Thank you.
Well, I've been looking forward to it. Yeah, thank you. We don't know if I can handle it. Four. Work shot shot. Presentation, your staff. Is this shit better? Thought I'd have a look at that.
Is that one on?
I'm not sure. You want to try up here, Mike? Try up here. Is this shit better?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, that's better. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and start already. If you're a member of the council and citizens, the jointest, thank you all. We all understand how sensitive this subject is within the community as it is the roadmap for our future. And this is something that we have been working on for the last...
German nuts.
Stop.
Timeout, Mike.
We got to fix this.
Can we... Can we turn off the PA system and try that?
Let me just turn this one speaker off.
Apology, Mr. Mr. Rose. It's hard when you're trying to work in a train station. It's not set up for this type of...
We haven't done one. Is that better?
No. So...
No, he sounds...
So, can we... Try it? Everybody would speak up? Can you hear me?
Yes.
We need this speaker.
Okay. Well, I don't know what's best. If we just speak up? Okay? Well, I think... It's not working. I think it's not working. I think we just need to speak up.
It's probably our best thing.
Okay?
Yes.
So, can we turn the microphones off?
I put down.
Is there any way just to turn the speakers down? The volume on the speakers coming out is so high.
Well, he did that earlier, but you couldn't hear him.
Bob's at the thing. Bob, can you answer your question? I'm not sure if...
Bob, can we fix this now or... Does that sound better? A little better? No?
Yours sounds good.
Yours sounds good. It doesn't have the echo.
Try yours.
Does this have an echo?
No.
No, it's echoing.
It is echoing?
It actually sounded good.
Try this.
Hello? Can you hear me back there?
Yes.
Testing, one, two, three.
I turned that one down. Hold on. One sec, mic's off. Try it again.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing.
No, try this one. Over here. Work the four. Over there.
Sorry, Breezy's out.
Testing, one, two, three.
Here we go.
That sounds...
Are our citizens going to speak if I don't have a microphone?
We'll figure something out. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to go ahead and get started. As I stated before, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I understand what a sensitive subject this is for our community as it is our roadmap into the future. And when I say that, I literally mean that it is a roadmap and it is a plan for the future. We've gotten a lot of feedback in the last two or three weeks from our council members. They met privately with some of the staff members and the city manager. We've gotten information from a lot of our citizens. They've sent out emails. We've gotten some social media posts that have been brought to us, concerns from citizens within our community. And I'm hoping tonight that we can answer some of the concerns and move forward with an adoption of a comprehensive plan for our community that everyone can agree on, that it is a plan for the future and that the plan can be adopted and amended at any time as we move forward. So, can we go ahead and move to the next slide? The existing comprehensive plan was adopted in 1999 and reaffirmed adoption with an added land use plan supplement in 2012. It accomplished many of the objectives set out in the plan. It helped us adopt policies within the city. It also helped us adopt ordinances regarding zoning, subdivision, and plats. It helped with our drainage and flood damage prevention. And it also helped us establish one of our capital improvement plans since 1999. This plan is out of date and we are definitely a different city than we were in 1999 or even 2012. What is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan establishes guidelines for the future growth of Rockport. It deals with transportation, housing, land use, economic development. And the guidelines provide options to the citizens, the staff, and developers for the future development within our city. It offers development strategies that may be used to meet the needs of our community. And it protects established neighborhoods. What a comprehensive plan is not... A comprehensive plan is not a document that... Excuse me. Not a document that any rights may be vested under because it is a plan and not a regulatory document. Just because the plan recommends something, the council is not obligated to grant the zoning or use that the plan recommends. It does not change the current zoning ordinance or change any zoning within the city. It does not dictate high-density development. And other than existing zoning, it does not dictate how a landowner may develop their property. These are some of the things that we've heard from a community over the last two to three weeks. If the city adopts the amended comprehensive plan, developers will have the legal right to force the city of Rockport to approve high-density rezoning request. The comprehensive plan in no way obligates the city council to approve high-density zoning. It merely identifies different development strategies that may be used to address the needs of the community. Rockport City Council is set to push through a 20-year comprehensive plan, a citywide ordinance adopting new land uses and zoning ordinances. The comprehensive plan does not change any of the existing zoning designations within the city. All current zoning remains the same or unchanged. The plan doesn't change any zoning. High-density zoning in the amended comprehensive plan will abolish the current R1 residential zoning ordinances, cutting the city's current minimum 7,000 square foot lot size down to 2,200 square feet. The plan does not abolish any current zoning designation and it allows for possible flexibility. Citywide land use changes from residential to commercial in the future land use map. No residentially zoned property has been changed to commercial by the future land use map. And remember, the future land use map does not designate zoning. The talk of inclusionary zoning. The only mention of inclusionary zoning in the plan is as a recommendation of what council could allow in the future. It does not dictate or tell the council they must allow. Density by right. The plan does not give or create this right nor can it be interpreted to do so. Reducing the minimum lot size for R1... Reducing the minimum lot size for R1 residential to 2,200 square feet. Again, there is no mandatory reduction as mentioned here. The plan only identifies flexible alternatives that may be considered. Reducing minimum living spaces below the current 500 square feet. I believe our current ordinance is 600 square feet is the minimum for a living space. There is no mandatory reduction as mentioned here. The plan only identifies flexible alternatives that, again, may be considered. Tax abatements and tax incentives. There are... These are merely tools that the council may utilize. The council is never obligated to grant these incentives or abatements. These types of things, as I've stated before, most of what's in the plan gives recommendations to the council of what their options can be. Please remember that each particular development request has to go through the same process. Usually it starts with staff interaction. Staff meets with the potential developer. We listen to them. We go over their request. We put it up against the codes of ordinances of the city. We tell them what our requirements are. We tell them what they're required to do. If they're not zoned properly to the request, we tell them what the process is to go through the rezoning process. And that process goes before the planning and zoning commission and the council. If they can get through that, then they have to come in and they have to designate to the staff of what their development is. And the next thing that we do is we look to see, number one, how does it fit on their property? Is it platted properly? Do they have enough room on the property to do the development that they're requesting? In other words, will it fit? Do they have the proper setback requirements? Do they have the proper parking spaces that are required? Do they have emergency access? So the staff goes through all of these things. And then, once again, once we've gone through that with the developer, the next step is they come in and present the project and they go through the process again with the council being the final authority. And there is flexibility. If you read the plan, the council can, if they so choose to do, they can grant certain variances such as height restrictions, setback requirements, and those types of things. But again, that is the authority of the council, the city council, at the time the projects are brought forward. This is an excerpt from the comprehensive land use plan from 1999 and 2012. The future land use plan provides a general picture of how land use may be arranged to reflect the growth goals and objectives of the city. It is important to note that this map does not serve the same purpose as zoning. There are several things, like I said, we got another email that was sent to us and it had a number of bullet points, about 16 or 18 bullet points. And it was indicating that the plan was dictating to the council that they must do certain things. Once again, the plan cannot and does not dictate to the council what they must do. It gives them multiple options when people come in and want to develop. The future land use map is developed to... It's basically just a map with an idea of what our city might look like in the future. And we've talked about this before, our business corridors along FM 2165, 3036, Highway 35, Highway 35 Business, and Highway 35 bypass or feeder road. Those are our business corridors. There are some areas in the downtown area that are colored for business because it is a business district downtown. We also talked about the integration from commercial to residential. We've had some developments in the near past where developers have come in and we've talked for a smooth, uh... A smooth development where we transitioned from possible commercial properties to residential properties. And when I say commercial properties, I'm not talking about a B1-type zoning. I'm talking about a commercial property in the R1 up to R6, I believe. Not R6 because that's hotel motel. But we would have things like shops and restaurants, maybe a convenience store or something, but we wouldn't have a muffler shop or a bait stand or something transitioning next to neighborhoods and stuff. Like, as I stated before, this has been going on for four years now. I know it's a very sensitive subject in the community. I know there are a lot of questions and concerns. We have met with the council one-on-one over the last month or so and gotten their feedback on the things that are important to them that they've heard from their constituents. So I'd like to open it up now to the council and ask if they've got any questions or concerns or any other things that I haven't touched on that they'd like to speak about. I'll start. Can everybody hear me? Mike, in our one-on-ones that we met with staff, is some of that stuff that we talked about in there, is that what we talked about tonight during the workshop or we already started working on some of those? No, we can talk about it tonight at the workshop. I do have two slides, the two slides that I think were the points of contention from the majority of the council members, if you want to put the first one up. This is planning integration. It talks about workforce housing. It says increase the supply of permanent workforce and affordable housing. The existence of opportunity zones south of downtown area may provide opportunities for a developer to create more affordable housing options. The opportunity zone program could be used to attract needed investment to the area. And the next one is, this is the one that was a point of contention, allow for increased density by right. The city should consider amending the zoning ordinance in the district to allow for more residential development near the downtown. To meet the need for more affordable service worker housing, adjustments to the zoning code would also be required. Right now, the smallest unit that can be built is 500 square foot, but zoning that would allow smaller micro units could allow for more unit space, excuse me, more units per acre. Reducing minimum lot sizes of 2,200 square feet per unit could also allow for higher density construction that is more economically efficient for workforce housing developers. And again, these are recommendations. If someone comes in with a request, and we get requests all the time. I came out of the auto parts store the other day and some gentleman stopped me and told me he had just purchased a piece of property across the street next door to Ealing and across the street from Taco Bell in that area, Ben's 35. And he wanted to know if he could have a business there and live above the business. And the answer is yes. If he goes through the proper process and makes sure it's zoned properly and everything else, can he do those things? Yes, he can. Could a developer come in here and say, "I've got an idea for micro apartments in downtown Rockport"? Yes, a developer could. Whether we have this plan or not, if somebody came in here and had that request, we would entertain that request. We would go through the process with staff, talk to that developer, find out exactly what it is that they're proposing, if it fits within the codes of ordinances that we have and everything else. Our next step was bring it to the planning and... And to the city council for you to vet it and make the final decision on what you want our community to look like. And you can say no. There's nothing that says you are regulated to say yes just because someone comes in and asks. Now, if we wanted to strike this from the comp plan, I guess, Dan, we would need to make that, the next, put in action item, right? We need to strike that as an amendment to the...
Will you... Will you make your motion? This is, this is on page 63.
Yes, sir. Uh, 83.
Well, three of the comp plan and three of the agenda packet, but so, sorry. And the next page is also an area that some of the council members had concerns on.
This one, for those of you that can't see, additional housing development strategies. And again, strategies being the key word. High-density zoning or density bonuses that require or encourage developers to include more units within a given area. Increasing density in low areas can draw development out of hazardous zones. Increasing density can also increase accessibility in areas where there are community facilities and amenities such as stores, schools, parks, and medical centers. Inclusionary zoning or policies require or encourage a percentage of affordable units within residential developments. The developments are commonly made up of multifamily units but can also be for single-family units. The goal is to provide the same quality of housing at the same amenities and the same amenities to a variety of income levels and eliminate the stigma associated with segregated, low-income, or affordable developments. And accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, are typically smaller units constructed on lots with larger primary housing unit, but the accessory unit can also be included in the primary structure. Most zoning ordinances restrict property owners from renting out accessory units. Communities supposed to accommodate more density affordability and rental units should include specific language in their ordinances for ADUs. And then tax incentives or abatements are exemptions, reduction, or delays in tax payments for developers. They can be granted when the property is purchased or while it is being developed. The developer benefits financially, but the city specifies how the incentives relate to increasing housing unit density or affordability. And again, these are strategies. They're not rules and regs. They're not law. They can just strategies that a city can adopt or a city can use if someone comes in and so requests. We can use these strategies. If council so chooses to remove some of these strategies from our plan, that can also be done. And then, I guess, Mike, my last thing I'll say, and then, towards the end, and this is on our one-on-ones that I have to talk, in the back where it has a whole bunch of the shells, do we change those or look at those and make those shoulds or coulds or mayes? Yes. Just trying to change that legalese up a little bit? Yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. Plan integration, we shall guide our designated programs in effectively preserving and revitalizing. And I realize in the back, and I've got so many papers here, I can't keep up. I do have all of that highlighted. It is the summary chapter? Yes, sir. And, uh... It goes over each chapter within the plan itself. And you're exactly right. It says, you know, revise and amend, adopt and implement, revise and update, review and update. And y'all highlighted all those things. And again, at your direction, we can revise this portion of the plan, you know, and we can put, you know, different language in there that doesn't sound specific or guiding, if you will. Is that, is that the proper term, Dan?
But Mike, those are all recommendations.
Right. This is, these are the recommendations in the final chapter of the plan. And again, it recommends that if we are going to adopt some of these strategies and some of these things, this is how we would do it. It doesn't mean that we have to do it. As I stated before, it is a plan. It takes us into the future. It is a roadmap. And, you know, we can adopt the plan, we can revise the plan at any time, and the plan does not constitute law. It doesn't mean that you must do these things. It means that you have the ability to do these things if you so choose to do it. I was going to say, I guess, go ahead, JD. Sorry.
So, again, to echo what you're saying is, so let's say this, some of these items or all of them gets stuck out, council decides to take them out. Doesn't mean that future council can come back and a developer comes in and pitches this idea for one of, for something as is, doesn't mean that, since it's not in the comprehensive plan, they don't, doesn't mean they don't have to do it. They couldn't possibly still do what is being pitched out, am I correct?
Absolutely. If someone comes in tomorrow with an outlandish development request that we've never heard of before, we would still take that request and we would run it through the same process. No matter what the ask is, if someone has a piece of property and they wish to develop it, if it fits within the codes of ordinances, if it's not something that is, you know, dangerous, you know, it doesn't belong in Rockport, you know, we have different ordinances for different things. Of course, we talk about smokestacks. We talk about sexually oriented businesses and those types of things, things we wouldn't want in our community. Someone can come in and still make those requests. We could have someone come in tomorrow and say, "I've got this great idea. I've got this plant that develops, you know, X, Y, Z, A, B, C, and I'm going to have three smokestacks and we're going to have 14 fuel tanks." They can come in and make that proposal. The council always has the option to say, "No, thank you, not in our community."
Thank you. I mean, I knew the answer to that. I just wanted the audience to understand that.
I got, Mike, going back, Mr. Morton, going back to the shell thing. Forgive me, Rockport graduate, A&amp;M graduate, simple, you know, the shell word, it means that we need to follow that. Should, may, could, that gives us a little bit of gray. That's all. That's my concern in the shell word, and I believe...
I believe we did a search, word search through the document, and we found the word "shall" only a few times, and that can certainly be struck or amended. But even in that, in that section, it clearly says, "These are recommendations," and it says, "If you're going to do this, this is how you do it." So it is a recommendation, but we could certainly strike those words. And again, you guys direct us what you want to do. If you want to make a motion and tell us, hey, take page 63, 64 out, you can have us do that. But I do, I do need to echo what JD said, is that if there is a developer that comes in and wants to propose a higher density use in the downtown area, first issue is, is that area properly zoned for that, okay? If it's not zoned for that, they have to request a zoning change. And that's a whole different process. And it's an important process. But even if we strike these things, it does not mean that developers in the future may not come to you as a council and ask for these things or put it out there for you to consider.
Dan, do we have a, that shell word? Just for point of clarification, we get a word search, word search through the entire document, and the word "shall" appears five times. All right? The word "will" appears 113 times. And again, that doesn't mean anything. If you want to go through the entire document, especially the final, the final chapter, which is kind of a comprehensive review of what's in the document and make recommendations for changes to that, we can do that.
Can I make a statement? More than a question. So I believe, just talking to committee members in here, when this was made, when people went to these workshops and had this come out for their future, we were, one of the main things that they're thinking about is our desperate need for workforce housing and affordability. We do not have that here for our workers. I know people come up with saying, "Well, manufactured homes." But especially coming right after Harvey, these people have these, have a manufactured home that might not last through Harvey. So that's, that's a security for them. That's not a safe place for them to raise their family or have a place for them to live and work in our community. So coming out with options, having these abilities to come out with a bigger, I guess, more options, more ideas how we can fix that in our community is why these things will come up, is what my understanding is. And I want to put that out there that we, as a middle-class person with a family in this community, as, you know, friends that work in this community, as people who can not afford living, we desperately need that in our community. And we have to think outside the box and we have to have those options. If we don't, we're not going to be able to give that to them. If you just say no to everything and make it a blanket statement, we're not going to be able to have those ideas out there to fix that in our community. And I just want to put that statement out there for everyone. It's just coming from my own personal opinion on that.
Do you have anybody else? Got questions or comments?
I do, Mayor. The general issue, as I see it, there's a couple of things here, a couple of things going on. One is turning Rockport into Cortoransus, which is what these really send to me. Which, of course, we don't want to. We're Rockport and not Cortoransus. On the other hand, I can, we can, I'm sorry, we as the council can make any changes we want to for this. End of May, beginning of June, we have a new city council. What we decide does not bind the new city council. We can decide anything we want to. And three months down the road, it can change because we cannot decide for a new council. Just putting that out there.
Again, if the plan is adopted, again, it is just a plan. There is nothing... There is nothing binding about the plan itself, so you are not dictating or obligating future councils to a decision that you make. The plan is still the plan, it's still just that, a plan. And anybody that's sitting in your chairs in the future now or after the election in May, they have the same option that you would as a councilperson, to vet the development as it comes in and make the decision that you think is best for our community, as doing that, as listening to your constituents, as you have in the past. I do want to mention one other thing, one of the notes that we got, and it's a very good question, and... Make sure that I don't say it incorrectly. It, it just says, please think about whether or not the City of Corpus Christi can and always will, and again, we do not buy our water from the City of Corpus Christi, we buy our water from San Patricio Municipal Water District. But thinking about our water supply, are we gonna have enough drinking water to supply all the new apartments, condos, and homes in the future? And that is something that we are constantly aware of, are constantly working with our neighbors and our suppliers to ensure a water supply for the future. We have a very strong, stable water system right now, and we have lots of capacity that will service the growth that we see in the near future. And when we get to a certain percentage of growth, then we would start looking at additional above-ground storage and those types of things, and working with our supplier to ensure that we will have enough water coming to our community for the future. So that was a question that was posed, and it's a very good question.
Council, any other questions?
Any further comments?
This is the workshop for council, we'll have comments when we get to the agenda item.
I have a question.
Again, this will come up when we get to the agenda item. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to, do we adjourn? Do we need to adjourn from the workshop?
We adjourned.
Workshop?
No. But we just move on to the next agenda item. And thank you to staff all at work. Yes, thank you all. Agenda item number five, citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience, from persons who have signed a speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training public service center, and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Or written comments received at 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting on any subject matter that is not on the agenda will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited by law, shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I've got a lot of different cards here, but I believe, under citizens to be heard, I've got one, Nancy Bolting.
Can y'all hear me? Good evening, council. My name is Nancy Bolting, and I live at 201 Spanish Woods in Rockport, Texas. I only wanted to address one item, and that was the use of personal electronics during a city council meeting. I think it is very important that y'all are assigned, I think, electronics for your use for city business, and the fact that I know that you probably are getting text messages and other things during the meeting on your personal devices, I would like to see something come up at one time to eliminate those, at least during the time of our city meetings. You're here to do business for the city and not necessarily communicate outside of this. We ask our kids in the schools to do this, we ask people that are employed by certain businesses not to use their phones, certainly we can do the same thing in our city council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolting. And I believe everything else is on our agenda item.
Sir, I turned in a card.
It says, agenda item 10?
Yeah, I turned in a card on five, citizen speaker. Are we able to speak on 10?
Yes, you can speak on 10.
I want to speak on both.
Next time, fill out a card for each one.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council. My name is Chrissy Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive, since 2005. I've lived at that address. This comprehensive plan has been opposed by a majority of your citizens for over two years now. The South Rockport neighbors have opposed this plan. They have over 300 members. I think Mr. Rikers will speak here tonight. I attended the July 13th and July 19th Planning and Zoning Hearings. I also attended the November 9th and November 23rd city council meetings when this plan was discussed. On July 13th, all comments were in opposition to this comprehensive plan. I took the video, I posted it on Cortoransas County.
Miss Rutledge, you're speaking on agenda item 10. This is for something that's not.
Citizens to be heard is what we're at right now.
But right, this, on things that aren't on the agenda.
May I speak on citizens to be heard?
On an agenda, and you're gonna get to speak.
Okay, so you're interrupting, I mean, y'all know, it's been a post by the majority. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Rusillo, you have comprehensive plan on yours.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you want to speak to?
Yes, but I wanted to just make.
Well, that will come under, that will come under item 10. Okay? Thank you. Okay. We have no more cards. Moving on to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be impeded by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items, plus the city council members will request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council, anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Brenbret, second from Ms. Jackson. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, thank you. Moving on to item eight, public hearing. A joint public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission, consider the request to rezone, well, we're gonna open the hearing right now, the time is 7:15, and the public hearing is over. Item eight, conduct a joint public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission, consider the request to rezone property located at 520 West Market Street, also known as Smith and Wood Division, Lot 73, Lot 8R, City of Rockport, Cortoransas County, Texas, to be one, General Business District, to develop office and warehouse space, currently zoned R1, first single-family dwelling district.
Mr. Kelly? That's you.
We have a forum. Thank you.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Mayor, city council. I have a business, I've been working here in Rockport since 2012.
Can we get your name and address?
I'm Mr. Davis Kelly. The property address or my home address?
Home address is 2124 St. Charles, Portland, Texas.
I own the property there, 520 West Market Street. Like to relocate my office space there, met with the city, done the pre-development meeting and stuff like that. Just want to make myself available if there's any questions.
Does anyone wish to make a comment on this item? Agenda item number eight, during the public hearing? Now, this item will be considered in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on this coming Monday at 5:30 in this room. Is that correct? So if anyone does come up with a comment they'd like to make, or they have questions, they can show up at that meeting on Monday, 5:30. Item number nine, conduct a joint public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission, consider the request to rezone property located at 1702 PC, 18th Street, also known as Lot 103, Lot 250, Ford's Square, 1715, being 9.99 acres, City of Rockport, Cortoransas County, Texas, R5, second multifamily dwelling district, to develop six to eight residential houses for long-term rental, currently zoned R1, first single-family dwelling district.
My name is, my name is Robbie Varner. I'm at 1702 18th Street, Rockport, Texas, planning to build new homes there, six to eight new homes for the purpose of long-term rental, and building my personal home towards the back of a 9.99 acres. That's basically what I am intended to do.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this item? Again, there'll be a meeting this coming Monday at 5:30 in this room, and if anyone has any questions or comments about that, you're more than welcome to show up and address the Planning and Zoning Commission, who will be here that evening. Thank you, sir. Time is 7:19, and Planning and Zoning is closing. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item 10, postpone, February 22nd, 2022. Deliverate and act on second and final reading of the ordinance of the City of Rockport, Texas, adopting an amended comprehensive plan for the city, providing that the adopted comprehensive plans shall supersede and replace any comprehensive plan previously adopted, providing a regular repealer clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. And we've got several people that have submitted forms, and these will be addressed in the order that they were received. Some of these people have requested to, to speak, and some of them just want to have comments right into the, into the minutes. And since there's so many, I'm going to share the reading with the council, reading duties for the council. First item is from Judy Sanders, 705 Raven Drive, Rockport, Texas. Please not reduce the zoning regulation for single-family homes. I do not want houses so dense on a single property. Second item is Jennifer Shaw, 904 Dune Street, Rockport, non-speaker. She has a statement to be read in the record. Here in Texas, legislature rules the public, the counties, and the cities. The legislator is the parent. The city is the minor child who must follow the parent's instructions, whether they like it or not. That rule of law is controlling Texas, even if a city is a homeless city with charter adopted by voters. When the legislator speaks, we must act as, we as a city must obey. All the flowery or clever words imaginable will not convince any court to the contrary. The Texas legislature enacted Local Government Code, Chapter 211, regulating zoning by cities. Listen to the words of Chapter 211.004A very carefully. Zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with a comprehensive plan. As an angry mother might say to her son, when he does not, when he does not clean up his room as she directed, what part of the word must do you not understand? That's the legislator telling our city council that what they enact in the words of a comprehensive plan must be adopted through zoning regulations. If the council tells the owner of an R1 lot, by the way of the comprehensive plan, that the lot, that the lot owner will be allowed to build a second house or apartment on the lot, the city council must pass a zoning ordinance making that happen. Must, it's a plain English word, which the courts will enforce without paying attention to what the city's lawyers argue after the fact. As an exercise of wishful thinking to give the city council members political cover for their foolish, for their prior foolishness, must means must. In the ordinance text before the city council tonight to adopt the comprehensive plan, there are a few words here and there, just wishful thinking, implying that this comprehensive plan is advisory only. For example, at the bottom of the first page of tonight's ordinance, it says, "Followed adoption by the council of the comprehensive plan, it shall serve as a guide to all future council action concerning land use." That's wishful thinking by the council, must means must. Next item is from Mark Hagan. Mr. Hagan, are you here? Mr. Speaker, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and most importantly, citizens of Rockport. Hi, I'm Mark Hagan, I live at 604 Silverado Street. I've lived in Rockport, Texas since April of 2012, when I retired after 30 years in the United States. I need to have my ejections on record that I absolutely 100% object and disagree to the strongest possible terms to the current comprehensive plan in its entirety. In particular, any reference to the decrease in the lot size, decreased minimum housing square footage sizing, increased in building height restrictions, inclusionary zones, opportunity zones, any reference to increased density development and/or tax payments. I just heard Mike speak several times and say that this thing doesn't matter, or that statement doesn't matter. If that's the case, the whole plan doesn't matter. But it does matter. What this plan will do is it will draw developments with like-minded ideas. We're not Austin, we're not San Antonio, DFW, we're not Houston, et cetera. These plans for dense, walkable communities might be okay for them, but it is not for us. It's not for Rockport. In my last final active duty assignment, I was in charge of all things policing and security. The Air Force developed a new plan to come up with how to protect installations. Nobody really knew how to do it, so we contracted out the plan development. People on the, in the contract were actually people that developed this idea, so we thought they would be the best place to go. They came in with preconceived notions and ideas, and they developed a plan that didn't work for us, because it wasn't our plan. So the wing commander came in and said, this isn't gonna work, waste the time, waste the money, get some people together and make a plan. So that's what we did. We used local people with no preconceived notion to develop a plan that worked for us. Similarly, Rockport was selected by somebody for some reason to develop this plan. They came in with preconceived notions, and basically developed a plan based on those preconceived notions. It's no wonder that the students are part of this process, because that's the way they were trained. These are the recommendations that they made. I just have to, to say in no uncertain terms, do not approve this plan. It is not good for Rockport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan.
I have a non-speaker for Arthur Perez, 126 Norwood Oaks Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to voice my opposition to Agenda Item 10, Comprehensive Plan. I was born in a small hospital here in downtown Rockport in 1960. The building was actually still there. I graduated Rockport Fulton High School in 1979, and soon after moved to the Houston area. I was fortunate to find equal employment and recently retired with 40-year service with ExxonMobil Chemical Company. Last few years of my tenure, I was part of their project in Gregory, Texas, and was fortunate that my company assisted me in relocating to my beloved Rockport. I did not look for a house anywhere else. I say all that to say this, that project just 22 miles away... I say all that to say this, that project just 22 miles away will be an economic ruin for this entire area. If we don't screw up what makes this quaint ruin sound unique, imagine our graduates going to have to move away to find employment, picture them being able to drive a short distance down the road and being able to afford a nice home here in their hometown. I would have loved to stay here, because I could have spent more time with my parents, who were also lifelong residents. I am certain it takes a special type of person to serve on city council or Commissioner's Court. I imagine a person can be pulled in all different directions. What is unfortunate is when a representative is pushed in a particular direction against the wishes of constituents. I hope that is not happening here, because frankly, I have not heard any neighbor state higher density would be a good thing for our community. Higher density is synonymous with congestion, and hasn't this city and county already been hand-wringing because of infrastructure issues? I am not against progress, but if last month's local election was anything, it was the voters reiterating that they will have a say in the direction we are to take. My wish is that the comprehensive plan be shelved until the next mayoral election to ensure there is clarity of the voters' wishes.
Chris Walsh, wishes to speak.
Candace Sargent, 214 Portia Avenue, Rockport, Texas, 7382. This is copied from Mr. Hagan. I strongly support every single word of the statement below. Need to let the entire city council know and have my ejections on record that absolutely 100% object and disagree in the strongest possible terms to the current comprehensive plan in its entirety. Any reference to decreased lot sizing, decreased minimum home square footage sizing, increase in building height restrictions, and any reference to increased density development. We're not Austin, San Antonio, DFW, Houston, et cetera. These plans for dense, walkable communities may be right for them, but not for Rockport. My personal opinion is you, as the local government representatives, are being led down a rosy path with the promise of money via grants, et cetera, to fall in the line with our now-liberal federal government regarding future city planning. You are supposed to be conservative Republicans, not liberal Democrats, but to any unknown outsider looking in, you could tell, you could never tell the difference. Rockport was selected for help with this plan by whom and for what purpose. Interferers since these days are fed propaganda, and in my opinion, are subject to attempts to indoctrinate them to a specific way of thinking. My own daughter could be a case in point, but she's smarter, that, kind of smarter than that to buy in. They've been trained to view this development in this way, so of course, it will be their recommendations. Must let all of you know, and if you continue down this path, I promise I will do everything in my abilities to have you removed from office at the first given opportunity. You may see this as a, via threat, so be it, but tides are changing in the words of the newly-elected county judge. We need to get back to the basics. Do not approve this current comprehensive plan. Respectfully, Candace Sargent.
Forgive me if I messed up this, now last name. Fran and JP Greve, 1304 South Church Street, Rockport, Texas. We have read the proposed plan for the City of Rockport concerning a plan for the future growth of our city and have several objections to the present proposed plan, which include, but are not limited to, these objections. On lots which not contain a single house that can be torn down and replaced by a dwelling, dwellings which will allow for small, multiple-family dwellings without any zoning hearing or input from the current residents of that neighborhood. We feel this increase in density to present neighborhoods would have a negative effect on the existing neighborhoods and the residents of said neighborhood. Awarding density bonuses to builders above what zoning is now in place, increased heights of apartment buildings, and lowering of square footage of dwellings, and changing requirements of areas with mobile homes. For these and many other reasons, we respectfully request that this comprehensive plan be vetoed. Thank you.
Karen McPhee from 607 Henderson Street, Rockport, Texas. She is going to be opposition. She says, "I do not support the 20-year comprehensive plan to adopt new land uses, zoning ordinances, nor the density by right. Tax incentives and abatements are opportunity zones to incentivize high-density development."
Michael Whitney, in opposition. "I do not want Rockport to become a Port A look-alike. Keep it small and respect individual homeowner properties."
Curtis McGee, 607 Henderson, Rockport, 7382. "Do not support the 20-year comprehensive plan. I oppose changes to the square footage and oppose changes to allow four to six houses being allowed to be built on a quarter acre residential zone."
Irene Lubica, 1108 South Austin Street, Rockport. "Here in the theory, there's absolutely no requirement by the State of Texas for any local entity to have a comprehensive plan. This is opposite to what our Rockport city managers have been telling us. Their obstinate scheme to approve a fake law draft despite our repeated inconsistent objections over the past two years is solely for their convenience. Here's what the Texas Local Government Code, A. The governing body of a municipality may adopt a comprehensive plan for long-range development of the municipality. The municipality may define the content and design of a comprehensive plan. Note carefully that the word "may" does not mean "will," "shall," "must," or "is required." Also, the code states, "The municipality may define in its charter by ordinance the relationship between a comprehensive plan and development regulations, and may provide standards for determining the consistency required between the plan and development regulations." Again, not a requirement. Since the entire first action item in the current draft implements a thoughtless default, it must be totally deleted. The only positive thing I see in the most recent draft is a new future land use map, which relegates most commercial growth to the bypass corridor and other major arterials that are already commercialized. However, it should go a step farther and preserve all single-family actual land uses by the more accurate ACAD standards, residential neighborhoods, particularly near our base. However, the rest of the draft is poorly cobbled together. It had been hijacked by college students who imported a lot of liberal progressive notions from urban areas that are detrimental to the quality of life in a small coastal town. The bottom line is the city council should not approve a bad comprehensive plan that taxpayers, homeowners, and residents can't tolerate. The draft is still controversial, even after every mention of the single most objectional item of mixed. And just a point of information, Ms. Lubica is right when she says the state does not require a comprehensive plan, but the City of Rockport Charter requires one.
Matty Wagner, 105 Oakmont Drive, Rockport, Texas, 78382, in opposition. "I am very much opposed that the comprehensive plan is written. I do not support the rezoning and reduction of lot sizes, tax abatements, and simply passing these irresponsible plans that will adversely affect the tax-paying citizens of this community. There is much to do to reresponsibly plan for the growth of our community by addressing the drainage problems, infrastructure, roads, sewer, and water, et cetera, before adding to our already strained infrastructure. It is not only irresponsible, but a completely backward way of thinking and planning. Go back to the drawing board and listen to the citizens."
Noreen Setebree, in opposition. "Oppose adopting the amended 20-year comprehensive plan you have proposed. There are many proposed changes that I don't believe are in our best interest, are us as residents, residents, and for our town, and that adopting this plan opens us up for future lawsuits by developers. I support Andrew Kane's objections and recommend changes to the plan proposal."
The next item, the next form is from Andrew Kane, who wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Andrew Kane, 2106, Lakeview Drive. I'm actually surprised that we're here on a second reading of an ordinance that's had such a substantial change from when it was first reading when a year ago. I question the fact that this is eligible for a second reading for all the changes. Many citizens and I have spoke to you and those before, some of you on the council over the last two years about this comprehensive plan. We have not come at the last minute like some falsely state. I won't waste your time repeating what I've said for years about dense development with 200 square foot lots, smaller house sizes, stormwater runoff applications, inclusionary zoning, development by right. Citizens pay for infrastructure to attract new property owners and new businesses who might receive tax incentives and property tax abatements. I will repeat and continue to remind you that when you hear this is just a plan, you heard it tonight, it is factually incorrect. Our charter, the plan itself, and state law dictate that this ordinance and zoning must be changed to follow the comprehensive plan. Not should, might, could, but must. I wish that what Mike was saying was in the plan, but I know it's in the plan, page 153. Action item 3.1.1.1. Revise and amend the zoning ordinance in accordance with the recommendations indicated in this plan. We can go to Texas State Law, Local Government Code Title VII, Section, there with me? Compliance with comprehensive plan. Section 8. Zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Right on with item 2, and I can look up the legal definition of the words "shall," "will," and "must." The legal definitions of that is always suggest an absolute obligation. So please understand, you are passing an ordinance, which is municipal law that must be followed in detail. The future recommendation land use map is basically a massive rezoning of private property that developers will state, the plan, I mean, I'm sorry, the developers are going to state when they come to design changes, this follows the plan, follows the recommendations when they come to the development. I believe you still have time to get the zoning abate ballot. It's your job to represent the citizens of Rockport, who have overwhelmingly opposed this comprehensive plan for countless meetings over the past two years. Our county is, our country is founded on citizens voting. Voting and respecting that vote is a freedom many generations of Americans have served to protect, and some died for it. This is a huge plan to the guide, to city's direction for the decades coming. It touches everyone in Rockport. If this should not be given to the citizens for approval, then why should? Let us vote. Thank you.
From Ron Morix and Skip Carrier, please vote no tonight.
Matt Hesley, 2003 Tully Park, Rockport. My name is Matthew Hesley, Ward 3, 2003 Tully Park, Rockport. I support a motion in today's council meeting, March 22, 2022, for council vote on regular agenda item 10, adoption of the amended comprehensive plan. I further encourage and support a yes vote from the council to adopt the amended comprehensive plan. A strategic plan such as this really serves as a flexible set of guideposts. I am satisfied that this document poses no direct constraint or ordinance, nor does it establish any future binding actions on the part of the City of Rockport or any other governing entity. None of us knows what the future holds, and there is much room down the road for debate on the consultation and application of this plan, along with later opportunity for prospective amendments. I respectfully ask that the council bring the plan to vote, and then vote yes to adopt.
John Berlett, 1315 South Church, Rockport, Texas. In support. Mayor and council members, I encourage you to take action as my elected officials to vote and vote to pass this comprehensive plan. It has been reviewed numerous times by your staff and council. The plan has been adequately discussed and explained to the community multiple times. As development projects come before the council, you will have the ability to take each case on its own merits for approval. We all need this plan to be implemented now to proceed concurrents, to provide concurrency for the long-term success of our city. Discrepancies can continue to be addressed by your P and Z board and staff and be fully vetted before permitting is approved. Again, I support the passage of the comprehensive master plan that has been tweaked and been debated for an extended period of time and should be voted for approval at tonight's
Carolyn Matthews, 1368 35 Bypass Number 12, Rockport, Texas. She is in support of the comprehensive plan. Dear Mayor, Reals, and City Council Members, my name is Carolyn Matthews. I live at 1368 SH 35 Bypass Number 12 in Rockport, and I am writing you today to voice my support for the passage of the comprehensive plan. And at the March 22 city council meeting, I feel this plan has been more than adequately explained to the public. I believe it is in the committee's best interest that you vote to pass this plan at tonight's meeting. Enough time has been wasted trying to appease the people that only want to sow discord in our community. Enough is enough. Let's move forward. Thank you for all that you do for me as a citizen of Rockport.
From H. Carrie Garner. Dear Mayor, Reals, and City Council Members, my name is H. Carrie Garner, and my family has owned our home at 6 Clam Drive in Rockport since 1966. I am writing to you today to voice my support for the passage of the comprehensive plan at the March 22 city council meeting. I feel this plan has been adequately explained to the public, the plan has been discussed in detail, and I believe it is in the community's best interests that you vote to pass this plan at tonight's meeting. This plan provides a roadmap for the future of our city, and I believe it should be adopted in its current form. I appreciate that you've explained how it can be amended in the future. I also have faith that when development projects come before the Planning and Zoning Committee and the council, that you will make decisions in our best interest.
Mark Estreman, 49 Flamingo Road, Rockport, in support. This plan has been discussed at a length and doesn't need to be discussed and challenged
Richard Smith, 131 Pecan Harbor Street, Rockport, Texas, in support. Dear Mayor, Reals, and City Council Members, my name is Richard Smith. I live at 131 Pecan Harbor in Rockport, and I am writing you today to voice my support for the passage of the comprehensive plan at the March 22 city council meeting. I feel this plan has been adequately explained to the public. The plan has been discussed in detail, and I believe it is in the community's best interest that you vote to pass this plan at tonight's meeting. This plan provides a roadmap for the future of our city, and I believe it should be adopted in its current form. I appreciate that you've explained how it can be amended in the future. I also have faith that when development projects come before the Planning and Zoning Committee and the council, that you will make decisions in our best interest.
Kim Hesley, 2003 Tully Park Drive, Rockport, Texas, in support. You want to speak? I'm so sorry. Sorry. Come on up.
Can I do that now?
Yes. Is that okay?
Did I get that wrong? Yeah, I'm sorry. I read the wrong line here. Please. It's okay. Kim Hesley, 2003 Tully Park Drive. Originally, there were areas of concern in the comprehensive plan, but I am satisfied those areas have been addressed, especially at the workshop tonight. What's been needed to be amended, removed, or corrected has or will be. We need to get this passed. We know that there's more work to be done that can be amended again in the future, but I don't think there's anything so serious as to postpone this again. As a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the future land use map is a tool and is part of the criteria that we use to make decisions on zoning requests. And we need an updated and most current future land use map. We need the most We need the most current tools available to make the best and most informed decisions for the future of our court. So I would encourage passing this at this time. Thank you.
Michael Meek. Non-speaker. Sir, do you want to speak? Do you want me to read this for you? All right, thank you. He is in support of all Texas cities operate with a comprehensive plan. Such plans are developed with citizen input and professional consultants and serve as an informative document and roadmap for a city's future. Such plans do not obligate a city to any particular density, zoning, square footage, or initiative. Incorrect information has been distributed by various means in recent days. Statements about what the plan will do is not true. City councils not obligated to zoning other than what is already in their current zoning ordinance. This updated plan does not change any current ordinance, zoning ordinances of the city. No areas are being rezoned for residential and commercial use in the plan. Plan does give this council and future ones the flexibility they need to consider requests on a case-by-case basis. There is no adoption of inclusionary zoning in the plan, and there is no density by right in the plan. Comprehensive plans do not impose such rights. Any developer or citizen can propose what they desire to be built on their property, and city councils can consider if it is the right thing to do for the community within the law and certain, and city ordinances. That is how representative democracy works. Most comprehensive plans provide examples and possible strategies for the accomplishment of city goals, as does this plan. That is why certain strategies like chapter 312 and opportunity zones are mentioned. These examples do not mandate that any city council units will utilize these strategies. Plans by common practice are updated every five years to stay current with best practices and changes to the federal law. In my previous 33-year employment as head of the chamber and EDC in another community, it was my experience that having an up-to-date comprehensive plan was beneficial to all citizens. I urge council to adopt the plan this evening.
Warren Hassager, 2517 Turkey Neck Circle, Rockport. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to address the discussion of the proposed comprehensive plan. I applaud each of you for your time and commitment to serve this fine city. As you've undoubtedly learned, many times your commitments go unrecognized. Probably served a partial term as Ward 3 council member and currently serve on Planning and Zoning, uh, zoning board of adjustment as well. Contrary to what the naysayers have propagandized on social media, the proposed comprehensive plan will not automatically change any of the current zoning in Rockport. To the contrary, the proposed plan is nothing more than an opportunity to propose non-binding guidance for future growth, corridors, residential development, multifamily, and the like. Unfortunately, some of those in opposition continue to speak out against the plan when in fact, during the many months of discussion, there were nowhere to be found. Also, I find it odd that no one of the vocal opponents have ever volunteered to serve on a board or commission, but rather have chosen to become keyboard warriors with spreading half-truths, rumors, and outright lies and accuracies, many times making personal attacks to each of you as mayor and council members. The fact is, the comprehensive plan changes no Rockport zoning automatically. Instead, zoning changes will continue to be reviewed by the Rockport Planning and Zoning Commission and reviewed, discussed, and finally approved or denied by the mayor and council. Mayor and council members, please consider the proposed comprehensive plan to be a living document that can be reviewed and modified as circumstances and the passage of time may necessitate. To that end, I encourage each of you to vote yes to the proposed comprehensive plan. Consider what is best for our city. It's time to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Bullock? This is the email you just sent me, read that out.
Um, I'd like to speak.
Oh, yeah. Please. It, yes, it's your turn.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Bolting. I live at 201 Spanish Woods Drive in Rockport, Texas. First, before I get started, I just want to show you, this is the plan that everybody keeps talking about. This is the actual pages of implementation. There are 15 double-sided recommendation pages out of this whole plan, and there are 29 pages of implementation chart with some of the things that are recommended to go back into the plan if it was said and recommended. So I just wanted to point that out. So I'm going to address the housing section, and please excuse me for this, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to apologize for not harassing you outside of these chambers. I certainly meant to call you late at night, stop by your home late in the evening, refer to you in derogatory nature, or mock you at your place of employment. This seems to be the style of some of our residents who vehemently oppose growth, low-income housing, high-density housing, small lot sizes, so the majority of our residents can afford to live in our community they work in. I recently came across numerous social media posts that fail to give accurate information and makes people in our community angry based on misrepresentations. They prefer to have large homes, large subdivisions that will eliminate the trees, and keep our low socioeconomic to middle-class citizens from owning a home, renting an apartment, or condo if they can afford. Lot sizes, they want to maintain at 7,000 square foot, and no structure smaller than 500 square foot. I've handed a picture of a home that's actually in the county that's 448 square feet. One bedroom, one bath, has a washing harness inside. It's very nice. The reader is falsely led to believe this plan wants 200 square foot homes, compels the city to waive permanent fees, forces the city to provide tax abatements, and prevents the installation of mobile homes in lieu of apartments. All of these are false. The social media posts also reference evictions in RV parks to replace them with high-density housing. There is no mention in this section of the comp plan as referenced in this false statement. What the plan does reference in case studies to make use of small homes mixed with apartments for lower to middle-income families. There is so much incorrect information stated as fact that I'm unable to address each one of these. I will go on to say that the plan does recommend educating low-income residents about homeownership programs and home buying tips. It also references the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, as well as Texas State Affordable Housing Corporation, each of which can be researched rather than believing what is being force-fed online on a daily basis. This is a full plan and two of the pages actually implemented. Please pass this plan. Let our future leaders have a guideline and just know that we are fully in support of this. We have one group that's not, and they seem to be clustered in one part of town.
Thanks, Ms. Bullock.
Do you want me to read that? I got two here. John Jackson, 312 Olympic Drive. He's going to be in support. He's a non-speaker. My name is John Jackson. I live at 312 Olympic Drive in Rockport. I want to voice my full support of the city comprehensive plan. I was one of the post-Harvey Planning Committee members and was among the approximately 200 citizens who participated in this process. The plan is just that, a plan. We have a comprehensive plan now, but it needs updating. And unfortunately, it has been widely misunderstood, misinterpreted, and misrepresented. Misrepresented. I can't talk anymore. For one, it does not obligate the city, but just provides guidelines for the city council to consider in the future. It does not zon areas. To the contrary, it gives the city council flexibility on a case-by-case basis. It does not impose density levels. Any case that comes up in the future will require the usual majority vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council. We've been kicking this can down the road along, long enough. It's time to adopt this plan and move on. Thank you. And I had another one in there. I'm going to have some order. We have Jonathan Heffron, 210 Champion Drive. He's going to be non-speaker in support. How many meetings and workshops must there be before the city council either adopts or rejects the comprehensive plan? This document has been underdeveloped in consideration for three years. A lot of citizens and professionals have worked on the plan, as well as P and Z members and city council members. Invisions and alterations have been made to accommodate citizens' concerns, and additional workshops have been held. With every meeting and in-between meetings, there are new arguments and complaints about the proposed plan. Understand that the city's charter requires a comprehensive plan. The city's current plan is well overdue for revision. The plan does not rezone the city. By its very terms and Texas law, no comprehensive plan constitutes rezoning. The proposed plan does not deny citizens' rights to protest future rezoning requests. The plan is a guide, and any recommendations in the plan, whether they relate to rezoning or anything else, are subject to the usual rezoning process. Ultimately, P and Z and the city council must approve any rezoning by a majority vote. It's time for the city council to vote on the plan, and I urge them to vote in favor of the plan.
From Karen Bella. I am in favor of the comprehensive plan and encourage you to vote in favor of passing it, eh?
From Shannon Brader, 703 South Burn Street. Please accept my apologies for not being available to speak in person this evening. While my physical address is technically outside of city limits, my home sits across the street from homes that are within the city limits, and I own a business that is within the city limits. I am in support of the city's comprehensive plan. While there are many topics for discussion as they relate to the comprehensive plan, I will address one that I know quite well, limiting the size of a home to a minimum of 500 square feet. My home, which is my four-time residence, is 448 square feet and is a gem. Everything within my home is less than two years old, including the walls, subfloor, ceiling, electrical plumbing, all appliances, and all finishes. To limit the size of homes to a minimum of 500 square feet is very limiting, and my opinion is unreasonable, especially given the recent growth in popularity of tiny homes or microhomes. I speak from a very personal level above, about this issue. Proving this plan is not limiting the city to accept all future proposed developments. As you know, you all have, with, have the ability to amend the plan in the future, and any projects must still be approved by the council and Planning and Zoning Committee. There are some of the many, many reasons that I support the comprehensive plan. I believe that's what she, the pictures that she gives, is of that little home. It's right on the roof.
Liz Murray, 13 King Bishop Lane, Rockport, Texas, in support. The comprehensive plan for the city of Rockport should be passed immediately. Many experts in this field, as well as local citizens, have been involved in the planning stages over the past few years. We are blessed that our elected officials saw this invaluable help and that it was at no cost due to the assistance after Hurricane Harvey. This city is a recipient of so many grants that have improved it and will continue to do so. A lot of effort was put into that piece, I'm sorry, a lot of it was, sorry. A lot of effort was put into that piece of it with a lot of great writing. I think it is imperative that we continue forward with this plan and acknowledge the impending growth that is already happening in Rockport.
Donna Townsend, 439 Augusta Drive, non-speaker, in support. I am Donna Townsend. I live at 439 Augusta Drive. I'm in full support of the comprehensive plan. I know this has been a process, but I believe we are at a point where we can go forward as a community with good faith as it is, and knowing the planning and zoning community that there is room for change if needed. Also going forward with the trust of the projects that come along, that you make the right choices for our community. Thank you in advance, Donna Townsend.
Now we have Pat Russo.
Thank you. Pat Russo, 187 Herino's in Whistler's Coke. This plan, as many have mentioned and we all know, has been discussed for several years, very deeply discussed for the last many months. It is one of two issues that have divided our community in a way that is very unfortunate. The comprehensive plan and the downtown anchor project. Relating to this comprehensive plan, it was developed during Harvey recovery. Some people are still recovering from Harvey. Some people haven't moved back into their homes yet. But in the months that followed the storm, there were many people, myself included, who were seeing to our own needs and to our homes and to our neighbors' needs. So people from outside the community came in and facilitated this, and we had individuals who were not familiar with our community sort of driving the process. We currently have a comprehensive plan. It has been amended once, as was shown tonight on the screen. I say, with all of the opposition that you have heard over the last many months, it is time to scrap this proposed plan. We begin again with real input from diverse groups in our community who are united in the fact that we want to move forward, but now have recovered enough from Harvey. We can give the time and the energy and the love that it will take. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marcela Wright, 418 Cherry Hills, non-speaker, in support. I completely support the comprehensive plan. We elect our mayor and council members to do what is best for the city. Without a sound of caution, we wander aimlessly.
Chad Lee, 115 North Sierra Woods, Rockport. Dear Mayor, Rios and City Council Members, my name is Chad Lee. I live at 115 North Sierra Woods in Rockport. I'm writing you today to support the passage of the comprehensive plan. This plan has been adequately explained to the citizens of our community. The plan has been discussed extensively and is in the community's best interest that council votes to pass the plan. This plan provides a guide for the future of our city, and I believe it should be adopted in its current form. I feel that when development projects come before the Planning and Zoning Committee and the council, that you will make decisions in our best interest and with our input. Sincerely, Chad Lee.
Linda Holsman, 338 Spanish Woods Drive, Rockport, Texas, in support. I attended a couple of roundtables wherein citizens were given time to ask questions offhand. I believe the city needs a plan, and that this plan is not written in stone, but is over time, alterable as circumstances change. In other words, it's a good start to outline a means of growth for where we hope to become a thriving community wherein people want to live, work, and rear a family. There will always be detractors to change and growth, as there are now, but without input and discussion, there is no progress. This plan, as the name indicates, is very comprehensive, covering all aspects of Rockport's future development.
Moving on to people who have filled out carts, George Rikers.
I'm George Rikers, hit O2 East Market Street in Rockport, Texas. I have about 25 people back here that are not in support, but they figured they'd save some time and have me as their spokesperson. South Rockport neighbors, and I am, uh, been very active in the community. I'm asking you to vote no, because that's what the majority of them want me to do. 98%. Living in the part of town, they say, they want me to represent. Uh, that is something that you should be doing, is backing the majority of the people. Like I said, I have 25 people back there not in support. I know of two of you city council members that made a career of military, of fighting for the right of fair elections and majority rules. I thank you for your service, and I can't understand that one of you want to, want to, uh, don't want to follow all that time you spent defending it. We have said for over two years now that the majority of people living in South Rockport do not want this. The majority of peoples live in Ward 1 and Ward 2. Uh, South Rockport has always been treated like a bastard child. Water Street Water Street is eroding to the point to no return, and Harbor Oaks and the Country Club, and even our members in Key Lago are here right now. We have members from all over the city, in Little Bay Shores, and also in the Country Club. Some of our members are in Ward 4 as well. This is so controversial that I can't believe you want to be responsible for it. Why don't you let the voters decide? If it's such a good plan, the voters will approve it. One of the biggest mistakes that probably cost the county judge his seat was because he did not listen to the voters. Even if you think you know best, sometimes you don't. You need to listen. Most people have their life savings tied up in their homes while trying to raise a family, worrying about paying bills, paying for medication, putting food on the table, and now worrying about a potential World War III and the threat of virus coming back up again. They have enough to worry about. They don't need to worry about floodwaters coming in their doors because you've built two and three homes on one lot. And did anyone think, any of them would stop to think about the septic? We have lots down on South Magnolia Street that are still on septic. There's no sewer running down there. If you cut down a lot size, you're not even going to be able to have septic on them. There's lots over behind Walmart on Patton Street also have no sewer running to them, and they're too small to put a house on unless they, I mean, they're too small to put septic on when they build their house. They need to have sewer down there. I think the city has enough to do without passing this bill, and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My mic on, it's Kristy Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I urge you to oppose this comprehensive plan. Vote no against Agenda Item 10. I want to correct the record. This plan was constructed as a roadmap. That's true. It starts with recommendations from committees or roundtables. 102 high school students, Rockport Bolton High School, were used in a study from college students to create the basis for inclusionary zoning. You should be ashamed of yourself for using high school students in that way and saying that inclusionary zoning is necessary. Your first recommendation for housing is inclusionary zoning to be used with tax abatements from developers, investors, who would get free infrastructure to build high-density properties, density by right, density bonuses, opportunity zones. If anyone on this council has a vested interest in opportunity zones, and I think they do because they possibly, they recuse themselves for a vote for opportunity zones that was supposed to be workforce housing, but it ended up being short-term rentals. That was recent. So if somebody here has a conflict of interest, they need to recuse themselves from voting on that, and I think they know who they are. So goal number one of your plan, you start with recommendations. It comes into goals. Those goals are turned into objectives, and then you have action plans. So your implementation section is provide for balance of land uses and associated regulations. Achieve a more inclusive land use plan and comprehensive zoning ordinance. You are rezoning comprehensively across the city of Rockport with this plan. This plan will be adopted as an ordinance. The first action item, revise and amend zoning ordinance in accordance with the recommendations. You all know that the recommendations are what need to be removed. Mr. Rendret, you're my council rep. We talked about this, how the inclusionary zoning, you recommend removing the plan integration. That's not enough. You have to remove the recommendation, the objective, and the action items, along with the plan integration. There are over 14 integrated plans within this comprehensive plan. They have never before been presented to this city council. One of them, by Texas Tech, legal mechanisms for hazard mitigation includes annexation. The annexation objective in this comprehensive plan needs to be removed entirely. The tax abatements need to be removed entirely. July 19th, the city attorney confirmed that any developer that has a pending request can compel this city of Rockport to approve that development request. Set the record straight, you all. You have a responsibility to your current individual property owners to get the correct information on the record. Oppose Agenda Item 10. Thank you.
Kristy Hutt?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and of course, my fellow citizens. I'm Kristy Thompson, and I own property in Rockport, 2201 Prairie Road. Words matter. A plan is to achieve something. A plan is not a suggestion. A suggestion is advice. A suggestion is a recommendation, and usually asked to be taken, last time I checked. I come here today to ask you to call a motion to add the comprehensive plan to the ballot in this coming election. We all know it will not cost any additional money to include the comprehensive plan to May's ballot. This plan dictates our future, our future growth for the next 20 years. The citizens should have a say, because we will be affected by this plan. Put it on May's ballot. Allow voters to be heard, as Andrew Kane says, and I agree, let us vote.
Jeff Hutt?
Jeff Hutt, 2201 Prairie Road. This is an ESL teacher's dream to have this meeting. It's all about modals. I would like to ask a couple of questions. Can the council choose to put an ordinance on the ballot?
Well, I'm not going to answer his questions. I'll answer the council's questions. This is a citizens-to-be-heard.
Okay. So here, you should put this on the ballot. It's obviously a big thing. If you can put it on the ballot in May, you should put it on the ballot. If you don't, there's enough opposition to this plan that this is going to go before the voters, if you like it or not. It takes 150 people to get it on the ballot. You look at the people who signed up tonight, we're already almost half there. If you get it on the May ballot, it'll cost the city no dollars. If you wait and let us petition it, the city is going to have to run an election. Now, I see two things from what we talked about today. One, nobody seems to like this comprehensive plan, or even those who want to pass it, they say, "Don't worry about it. It's just recommendations." None of them have given you a single reason why, which is the same thing, you should pass the plan. Nothing positive. The things that you've talked about housing, it's not about Heron Oaks or small, little communities with grass and small houses. The type of workforce housing they're talking about is 51% low-income government housing that's developer, the developer owns the land, the government pays for it. Mr. Meek back there said, when they talk about workforce housing, this is what they're talking about, 51%. They're not talking about homeownership. You guys, the people who've come out and support this, the Chamber of Commerce, they're supported on hot funds. You want to do something about our community? Don't make everything about short-term rentals. Having everything about short-term rentals gives them money, but it draws, drives the price up of housing for regular folks. And I don't think it's right for the council to talk about people not living in RVs and mobile homes. Who are you to decide where people should live? Who are you to decide what's safe? Two things I believe we could do. If you could put it on the ballot, great. If you could put in a charter amendment that says we don't have to have a comprehensive plan at all, and then you let the citizens vote. You yourself admitted, we do not need to have a comprehensive plan except for the charter amendment, charter. Let's amend the charter. Let's get rid of it. Let the people vote. Thank you.
Just a point of information on that. The charter was adopted and voted on by the citizens of Rockport and chose to have a comprehensive plan.
Let us go again.
Make a change, AJ.
Let us go again.
Jatine Baka.
Jatine Baka, 2915 Business Highway 35 North. We're going to put you out of the job. We're going to vote everything in. I urge the council to approve the comprehensive plan. This plan has been years in development. I feel that this plan provides the best option for the future of our community. I echo the same feelings of others. This is not a perfect, but it is far better than the one it is replacing. It is derived from citizen input that has been formatted by institutions that assisted our community after Hurricane Harvey. I support this plan because it's a roadmap, not a rubber stamp for future development. The citizens and council still have the final word in future rezoning and developments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last card. Brett Bolting, 201 Spanish Woods Drive, Rockport. Concerned with the comprehensive plan, he's a non-speaker, would only please, in support of the comprehensive plan, pass as it is. Thank you. Right, council, we've had everyone speak, requested the other comments or input.
I think my word has been very loud and very vehement.
Okay, I'm going to start here. So I keep hearing the Section 211.004, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with the comprehensive plan. It must be designed to. We're forgetting the letter part of this part here. Lessing congestion in the streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote health and the general welfare, provide adequate light and air, provide the overcrowding of land, void undue concentration of population, or facilitate adequate reasonable transportation. I'm asking you, Dan, to clarify that for us so we can have that clarification out here.
So, yeah, you're correct. The other seven items that zoning regulations must be designed to are pretty critical here. And it's the reason why, despite the adoption of a plan, requests that don't fit the zoning that's in place have to come through the process. Because regardless of what the comprehensive plan recommends, if that individual request does not meet those objectives, there's no obligation, there's never an obligation for the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend approval, and there's no requirement that the city council adopt. And, you know, it's, I've been doing land use law for over 20 years. I deal with comprehensive plans all over the place. I could give you example after example of situations where, when a comprehensive plan was adopted, it recommended a particular use in a particular area, and by the time an application actually came forward to accomplish that, times had changed. Development had changed in the area, and that council did not want to adopt that, and they didn't adopt it. When those scenarios happen, ideally, because it's a living document, that portion, whatever that corridor is or whatever that location is, needs to be reviewed for amendment of the comprehensive plan, because the situation on the ground has changed. By the same token, I've seen situations where there was no particular use in place because it was open space, and the plan had to be amended before any kind of zoning could be recommended there, because it was just in the plan reflected as this should be open space. So before anything could happen, those amendments have to take place. So, you know, I guess my takeaway is that it is not accurate to say that, once this is adopted, then boom, you have to, you must adopt regulations. That is not what that says. That is not how that is interpreted. That is not how any case law that you will ever find dealing with comprehensive plans and zoning plays out. There's been, and I want to address that too, because there's been some mischaracterization of a very recent case coming out, 13th Court of Appeals, that happened in Austin. That case is dealing with the city of Austin doing something that we never recommend cities do, and that was they tried to accomplish a massive rezone without individual notification. Had nothing to do with the comprehensive plan, right? This was zoning. This was, there are comprehensive plans in place already. What zoning requires when it's an actual zoning case is, as you all know, and as our PNC knows, individual notification within a 200-foot radius of wherever that request is. What that case that was distributed around Rockport is talking about is when you try to rezon a larger area, right, not an individual piece, and bypass all of that individual notification. And the 13th Court feels correctly ruled, you know, that is not the intent of the statute. That is not at all, none of that case had anything to do with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is not zoning, and that is not applicable. That situation is not the scenario here. That would only come into play down the road when actual zoning cases are done, and as we heard Mike and staff talk about, there's still a process to be followed. One other thing I'd like to touch on is this idea that, so taking things out of the comprehensive, absolutely, the council has the discretion to remove some further things from the comprehensive plan. What I would say, just as an aside, is those things that are mentioned, nothing, and I think Mike alluded to this, nothing prevents a developer from coming in today with those same ideas and those same desires and those same questions, and if the property they own is already zoned appropriately, they can proceed. They don't need anyone's permission if it's zoned accordingly. If it's not, then they have to go through the process. Whether it's mentioned in the comprehensive plan or not, is when we talk about types of housing. If I'm a developer and I'm building an apartment complex, I can certainly set aside, on my own decision, set aside as many units as I want for whatever income level I want to set those aside for, whether it's in your plan or not, and I don't need your permission to do that. And so when we talk about this controls all those things, I think that's giving a little bit too much credit to the comprehensive plan, because it absolutely doesn't. Tax abatements, enterprise zones, you can adopt those anytime you want to, whether that is in your comprehensive plan or not. It's only listed in the plan because it's a tool often seen in development. But it's available through the tax code, whether it's in your comprehensive plan or not, and if I'm a developer and I want to, and I request a terms, you'll be able to tell me yes or no anyway, either way, either way that it's, whether it's in here or not. So I just don't want people to misunderstand what this does or what it doesn't do.
I also want to just point out that, I think, just to go on what you're playing, we have that word, comprehensive plan, just clearly written on our future plan map. A comprehensive plan shall not constitute regulations and establish zoning district boundaries. I think that gives us more of a steady hand, too, that we are not changing zoning as it is. And I want to make sure that's clear. I also want to just kind of clear on with the RVs. I don't want to tell anyone where to live. I want to give people options. Our community needs options. We have middle class, we have workers, we have people who are not be able to live in their homes, yes, from the hurricane. They need options, and we're not giving it to them. RVs, you know, duplexes, apartments, you know, small homes, whatever we can, why would we not want to give them options to live and take care of their families and their loved ones? That's where I'm coming from, where I say I want to give people options. I just want to make sure that's clarified, and that's, I think, this plan gives, it opens us up for these options. We don't have to do anything. We still have to get everything approved through every channel, just options.
Fennell?
We'll make a motion to approve the Gofflin Plan, striking pages. We'll make a motion to, uh, approve the comprehensive plan, striking pages 63, 64. And I'm not real sure how to talk about the, uh, the verbiage, uh, the shells and students.
That would be like amending the, uh, the final chapter. That would be amending the, the final chapter, which would be the summary chapter to take up the verbiage that you're concerned about.
Okay.
And if we, I don't know how we would do that.
I, I think what you're suggesting is we do the word search for shall, will, any, any, any type of that language and replace it with may. Is that what you're suggesting?
Okay. So let me start over. Sorry. Sorry, Teresa. Uh, motion to approve the comprehensive plan, amending, I'm sorry, striking pages 63, 64 in the summary or word search for the words shall and replace with may, could, would. And also, that's it.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Beattie. Any further discussions?
This does not have to go back. We're done, right?
No, you can, the city council can amend the document and approve it without it being referred back to P and Z.
I just, I want that on.
Asking if it goes back to P and Z.
No, it does not have to go back to P and Z.
It's not have to go back to P and Z.
Motion second.
I would like to amend the motion to strike chapter nine upon, uh, further review.
Is that an interning motion or?
No, it's amendment, it's amendment motion.
Amending, so you want his language also?
No, he's asked, that's a quick question.
Oh, um, instead of, so it is, it was an interning.
No, no, I mean, you want to amend it to, to add that to his motion?
Yes.
Would you repeat it?
Yes, I would, I want to amend the motion to strike chapter nine and review it a later date.
Is there a second for that?
Bring it up, check it out. Yeah, I'm trying. One second. Yeah, chapter nine is the implementation. Okay.
Do we have a second for that amendment? Motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Can we legally do that? I mean, like, just take it straight out and that, like, and put it back in?
Yes.
Word one.
I'm just teasing you to your voting on a motion as a whole.
No, they're voting, they're, they're voting on.
We have to vote first.
At first, right?
Amendment first.
Thank you.
Voting on the amendment first, aye.
On the amendment for chapter nine, I'm a no, so.
Okay. Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Yes. So we're taking, so if this dies, then the whole thing dies?
No.
Yes.
I'm just making sure I understand what's going on here.
Approve this motion. You're agreeing to, um, Mr. Brundrette's, uh, suggestions with, with.
No, no, my amendment.
Voting on her amendment.
Which is striking nine, chapter nine.
No.
She said. No to the amendment.
No to the amendment.
Yeah, and I vote no.
So we're back to, back to the original.
I'm sorry, I missed, uh, for Tennessee vote.
No.
Now we're back to the original, which is to approve, striking page 63, word searching, replacing the word shall with may, could, or would. 63 and 64, sir.
May I add the question that there are, there are certain things in the plan where it says that the future land use map shall not or does not constitute zoning. So we have to be careful on, on what your motion is. We take the word shall out, there's places in there where it's.
Director, one, is it a direction to council to approve something?
That would be in the implement, implementation chapter, I assume. Okay. So, do you want to clarify that motion, Dan? Yeah. All right. Question to approve, comprehensive plan, striking pages 63, 64, words, shall, should, I'm sorry, shall, will, in the implementation, chapter nine. Must. May?
The only thing I would add, you may want to limit that, and maybe this will help address Mike's concern, limit that motion to chapter nine. Wait, mister, because that's the implementation.
That's what I said in the last.
Okay, I'm sorry.
He said amendment.
Sorry.
So we have that. Does everyone understand?
Second.
Yes.
The second.
So we, we had the, the original motion and we had second one, so we're ready to vote. Word one.
No.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, reports from council. Anybody want to go first?
It was a great weekend. Um, market days, crawfish boil, the beach was crowded and, um, so I'm sure a whole lot of, uh, hot funds were acquired.
Uh, we're still in session, please, if you want to.
Hey!
Please go outside, thank you.
Heard great things out of, uh, word one, out of the, uh, crawfish, uh, cook-off, uh, very well done and, uh, also had market days, a very busy weekend at Rockport, uh, great job, uh, to everybody, uh, that, that, a lot of those things have happened for, for all you still to do and, uh, also market days, so thank you all for that. Um, we have Rockport Little League opening ceremonies this weekend, Saturday morning, 9:00 AM, Memorial Park. Rick's not here, but, uh, the park guys have been working really hard getting, uh, Memorial Park ready to play ball. So it's springtime, so baseball's here, guys. If you might want to come out and support Little League, we'll be there all day on Saturday. Thank you all.
We had our Rockport Country Club annual meeting, um, I think it was about a week ago, that I attended. Uh, Mr. Stevens, Chief Stevens over there attended and he was speaker, went over, um, just concerned with, uh, with the citizens on what the crime is happening in the area and he did a great job. Um, we also discussed the new drainage projects going on in the community with the new, uh, pipeline being brought in on hole 11, I believe it is, um, which they seem to be very excited about and will help with a lot of the drainage issues coming up, um, especially now that it's going into the spring and summer months. So it was a good meeting. Um, and I think that's about it. So thank you for everyone coming out today and speaking and we do appreciate everyone's, um, uh, voice coming to be heard. Thank you.
I, I just echo what everyone else has to say and thanks everyone for being part of the process.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.